It is seven o'clock on Wednesday, August 30th, and I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting. I have with me tonight Brian Solacy, Jim Dietrich, myself, Sarah Mallor, Sean Zahn, Rob Scott, and John Bananas. Tonight, since this is Rob's first meeting, he will be participating but not voting, so the remaining five members will be the ones voting on the two applications tonight. And the way we work is I'll open the public hearing, read the motion, and then I'll ask the applicant to present their project. Then the board will ask questions, and then we'll see if there are any further comments. With that, I will open the public hearing for the application of Peter Lavasser, Phase Two Design Studio, on behalf of Lucy Nois for a special permit under Sections 5.4 and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to renovate an existing non-conforming structure which encroaches into the side setback by adding 38 square feet on the first floor between the two existing sections of the structure and constructing a second floor addition over that section of the first floor, creating 288 square feet additional living space at 2 Pulaski Drive, Assessors Map Number 41, Lot Number 41 in District B, filed with the town clerk on July 17, 2023. So would you like to introduce yourself and to present the project?
Sure. I am Peter Lavasser. This is a homeowner of Lucy Nois. And the -- does everybody have a drawing from the document? It's open up. Are you here for this or?
No.
Okay, I'm good. So as you can see on the site plan and as you just described, the only new square footage of the roof is that center pink square. The three-season porch to the north of that is going to be removed and replaced with a proper crosswalk. The non-conforming side yard setback is 15. It encroaches within the 15-foot side yard setback. But the lot configuration as it is, it's where the addition is going to be, ends up being about 28 feet off the side yard. And I understand you have to go by the worst-case scenario. So I just thought that was worth mentioning. So if you go to the A2.0, the floor plans, they can just line up and you can see the 38 square feet in between the two rooms on the first floor. And then the second floor is completely new over those two volumes. And that will house, on the right side of the page, an expansion of the bedroom. And on the left side, in the middle, there'll be additional bathroom space, shared bathroom up there. And it's just an expansion of the existing bathroom. And then to the far left is a new bathroom for the primary or master suite. And on A3.0, the elevations, again shaded red-pink, shows the new volumes requested.
And this is on the rear of the house, correct?
Correct, yes. At the front of the house, there's no change. And then from the left to right, it's just that upper area, backyard. It's that second story. Small connector piece, which is now empty.
Is that a view to the other side?
Yes. Lucy Nois has spoken to some of the neighbors. One showed up last night to state her approval. We have two letters here of approval. And I believe one was mailed to the other.
Who was the lady last night?
I believe that was -- I didn't catch her last name. But I think she was the one diagonal to.
Puckin Street.
Diagonal about her.
I remember that she lived up on Puckin Street.
Okay.
Oh, so she's not even at Butter?
Yes. The last, she's right at the corner. She would be on Pleasant at the corner of the Plaza.
Oh, she was on.
Yeah. It would be the.
The first house on like what are they?
86 Pleasant or 94 Pleasant, probably.
Yeah.
So these letters are from Anita Brewer Sijahome? Screwed that up. Sis Pulaski, supporting the construction. Patricia Ambrose Forplasky, supporting the construction. And today I received an email from Mary and Bob Foley at 1 Pulaski, supporting.
Oh, Mary says it's okay.
So are there any questions? Bob, Rob?
So which part of the house is actually going to be expanded within a non-conforming setback? I would just say, because I'm looking at the -- I know it's not a step-by-play plot plan, but if I look at the plot plan and I -- obviously, the yard is stepped back. But where this is increasing, you have a 28-foot eight. So what part of it is within the 15-foot that's being expanded?
Well, I was informed that you have to take the worst-case scenario.
Right.
So any --
Well, yeah.
Anything they do to that sideline, they have to apply for a special permit. But for in this instance.
With the yard steps.
They conform.
Right, if.
Yeah.
Right. I guess if the regulations allow for you to take a 15-yard setback off of each individual property line, then yes, it would not be.
Okay. I'm just saying, the property line is step back. The way you're increasing the nonconformity, it's actually.
It's okay.
It's okay.
Right.
Yeah. But it still requires a special permit.
It does.
Yeah.
We're here because that is a nonconforming.
Because it's in the side setback on that side, even though the setback changes.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
That doesn't make sense.
Okay.
That's what I suppose.
Okay, well, I haven't done zoning in this particular town, but. Okay.
That was my belief on the start. The building inspector informed me that in the worst-case scenario.
All right.
They relied, so.
Any more questions? Rob?
Uh, no. No, I'm good.
Jim?
No, I drove by and took a look at it.
Okay. Brad?
I'm good.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this application? If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I think we're good. And you're not here for this application. With that, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
So would.
I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Peter Velasser, whatever, Phase Two Design Studio on behalf of Lucy Nois for a special permit under Sections 5.4 and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to renovate an existing non-conforming structure which encroaches into the side setback by adding 38 square feet on the first floor between two existing sections of the structure, removing the first-floor porch, placing it on a foundation to create an office, and pushing back the facade several inches to align with the existing mudroom and half-bath, and adding a second floor over those sections of the first floor with compliant second-floor egress windows to create an additional 288 square feet of living space at 2 Pulaski Drive, Assessors Map Number 41, Lot Number 41 in District B, filed with the town clerk on July 17, 2023. Based on a finding that the proposed project to renovate the first floor and construct a second-floor addition creating 288 square feet of additional living space is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the existing non-conforming structure and the requirements and conditions under Section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met. Based on the condition that the project is constructed in accordance with the following plans. Proposed site plan prepared by Phase Two Design Studio dated July 20, 2022, revised July 17, 2023, based on the site plan prepared by Old Stone Lot Plan Service LLC dated September 17, 2017. Nois residence plans prepared by Phase Two Design Studio dated July 20, 2023, revised July 17, 2023. E1-0 existing floor plan, E1-1 existing elevations, A2.0 proposed floor plan, and A3.0 exterior elevations. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Sean seconds. Any discussion? You ready to vote? Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sean? Sean?
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes. Who would like to write this?
I'll do it.
Sean will write. Who would like to review?
I'll review it.
Jim. Fantastic.
You ready yet? Sean's ready.
Sean's ready. Is that the first one you've written?
Yeah. Wow.
I didn't know you knew how to write.
I don't.
So you're all set. We will write the decision within 90 days. And then there's a 20-day appeal period once we file. You'll be notified when it's filed with the town clerk. And then you'll be notified at the end of the 20-day appeal period. The building inspector will issue a building permit after it's filed with the town clerk during the appeal period if you want to proceed at your own risk. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is 4 Butler Ave. So I will open the public hearing for the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc. on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campagnelli for a special permit under Sections 10.1, 12.5, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to raise the existing non-conforming structure in the flood zone one foot, add additional levels for additional living space, and adjust the footprint, which will result in it which will result in it encroaching an additional inch into the west-side setback and adding a deck which will which will encroach an additional five inches into the setback. And a variance under Sections 5.5 and 12.4.6 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to allow three stories on a portion of the residential structure which does not exceed 35 feet in height at 4 Butler's Avenue, Assessors Map Number 1, Lot Number 33 in District B, filed with the town clerk on May 15, 2023. So as the board will recall, we had the application before us, before it was withdrawn without prejudice. And we suggested that it would be more appropriate to have a variance for the three stories that exceed the two and a half. But we still have the special permit on the additions. So I thought that maybe. Brian, if you can go ahead and present to us, we'll probably deal with the special permit first and then the variance. But you can do the whole presentation if you wish.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't sure if you needed me to re-present everything, but there is someone you want to.
Let me ask the board.
I guess that makes sense.
What's the board feel?
I would just suggest anything that we should know of that has changed since our last meeting.
Okay.
Because I think we all remember how we left off. But if anything has changed or if there's any new information since then, then you need to know.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, so there really isn't. I mean, I guess just a quick recap. You had asked us to apply for the variance, given we are asking for, you know, a partial third story due in most part to the flood zone requirements that were, you know, raising the house up another foot or so from where it is now for the main living level to comply. Nothing else has changed other than we are asking for that variance. You know, we haven't changed any of the footprint, any of the heights, anything like that. It was really just about, you know, the discussion that we had about the third story and the variance that, you know, you guys seemed to generally be okay with in our last meeting.
Brian, can you remind me which plan number shows the? I guess I'm looking for the site. I'm looking for the changes. I guess that's the site plan, the unit of that, right?
Yes, the site plan shows the, you know, addition of a couple of feet on the house and then the deck, which is what encroaches into the side yard.
Okay. Anybody have questions on that?
Oh.
Rob?
Not the side yard, but you have some questions. I can't.
Yep, you can.
When you say you're going to raise this by a foot, what is the plan to get that raised? How are you going to achieve that?
So the, it's a split-level home currently. Apologize if you get a siren in the background. Split-level home currently. The lowest level of that is kind of their main living floor. And that is a foot below where it needs to be for the flood zone. So we are most likely going to be adding on to the first-floor deck and raising it up that foot.
So you don't, you're not going to raise the foundation? You just want to reframe the floor up?
Most likely.
And what's that going to do?
We won't be touching the foundation either way.
Is that going to, are you going to have an appropriate ceiling height if you do that?
The whole thing is coming up, right? So we're basically, those first-floor walls are coming down to be able to do that, right? And then we're going up from there. The.
Didn't that look?
You may not have had the background on this before, but the current house in the, what we're calling the proposed garage, there is living space now, which is obviously below the floodplain. So we're turning that back into a garage, which is what it was originally when the house was built. And then again, there's living space above that, a half-story above the main.
Two stories.
Floor. So we're adding another floor to the house. But again, there's a split, a split floor.
Are you required to get a Loma?
We're going to get a what?
Loma.
Um, you said Loma?
Correct.
What's a Loma?
Yeah.
When you have to change the map due to the flood zone?
It's like a FEMA.
Well, we'll need a flood check if we're done.
Have you been before Conservation Commission yet?
No.
No. Okay.
It's coming up.
Okay, okay. They'll go before Conservation Commission.
So they'll need a map, letter of map amendment to be.
They're not amending the map.
We're not amending anything.
So you're not actually getting it on the floor?
Conforming to raise it up to 14 feet above sea level. That's required by FEMA.
Okay.
None of our houses have that.
That's the first one I'm naming, then.
Yeah. There'll be others.
It's a test case.
Yeah. Yeah, given that we're doing a substantial renovation, we have to bring that floor level up.
The old set, Rob?
So bringing up that one-foot level will get you out of the flood zone high enough to be compliant, essentially?
Right, yeah. Yeah, for living space, yes. You're allowed to have a garage, storage space and whatnot in the flood zone or below that level.
Anyone have any questions on the special permit? Let's move on to discuss the variance for the three stories versus two and a half. I think our prior discussions were the fact that it was a split-level house. And it certainly appeared to us that it was three levels, three stories on a certain section. And therefore, we felt it was more appropriate to issue red variances with the understanding that because of the wetlands buffers, they can't go out. And because of the FEMA flood zone issues, they're restricted in what they can do. Even though it's a relatively large lot, it's odd-shaped and mostly wetlands. So any questions?
Yeah, I think the going for the variance, it takes away that gray area where there's, you know, some of us thought maybe it could be, you know, defined as a two-and-a-half-story or a three-story. So I think the variance makes it more clear-cut.
Yes. Well, it's an easier decision.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's slightly harder.
Takes away that confusion.
It's obviously three stories. I mean, you just have to look at the elevation. In spite of what people keep referring it as two-and-a-half stories, it's three stories. First story is the ground level where the garage is. And then it goes up. And so the variance will clarify it and allow them to do what they need to do. And their hardship, frankly, is because of the floodplain information going up. They can't, they have no control over that. And so otherwise, they would not be able to basically raise what they, they could raise the older part of the house, but they couldn't do anything with the other part. And that would be a serious hardship. So I agree. We suggest that they do a variance.
You decided this last, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's perfectly acceptable way to do it. But this way, it also makes it clear why we were doing it, which is important.
Right. Yeah. So are there any other questions in the variance? Okay. Then I will open up to it, up to the public. Do you?
My house.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You remember him?
We met you, we should have known.
Well, because we always hit him with his wife.
Yeah, I love it.
Yeah.
My wife's hoping to be quick.
Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application? If so, please raise your hand.
Sarah, I'm the only one on Zoom.
Thank you. Thank you. Wow.
I slipped it right through.
It could be done by 7:30.
Yep. I encourage you.
With that, I'll make a motion. And I'm going to make two motions. One for the special permit and one for the variance. I just decided it was clean.
Yep.
I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc. on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campagnelli for a special permit under Sections 7.2, 12.5, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to raise the existing non-conforming structure in the flood zone one foot, add additional levels, including additional mass in the setback, and encroaching an additional inch into the side setback, adjust the footprint and add a new second-level deck which will encroach an additional five inches into the side setback at 4 Butler Ave, Assessors Map Number 1, Lot Number 33 in District B, filed with the town clerk on May 15, 2023. Based on a finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, the proposed alteration to the structure will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it's located than the existing non-conforming structure and the requirements and conditions under Section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for a grant of a special permit have been met. Based on the condition that the residential structure renovation is constructed in accordance with the following plans. Zoning Board of Appeals Plan prepared by Gateway Consultants, Inc. dated May 9, 2023. Plans prepared by BDS Design, Inc. dated 5/9/23. C1-0 existing basement plan, Z1.1 existing main floor plan, C1.2 proposed garage and foundation plan, Z1.3 proposed entry and level-one plan, Z1.4 proposed levels 1.5 and 2, Z1.5 proposed roof plan, Z1.6 south elevation, Z1.7 east elevation, Z1.8 north elevation, Z1.9 west elevation. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second with that? Jim? Okay. Did I get all the plans right?
You did. So I know.
Any discussion? Take a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes. I further move to approve the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design, Inc. on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campagnelli for a variance under Sections 5.5 and 12.4.6 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to construct three stories on a portion of this split-level home with a height of less than 35 feet, where two-and-a-half stories is allowed. Based on a finding that wetland buffers and FEMA flood zone requirements limit the ability to expand the structure horizontally owing to circumstances relating to the shape and topography of the land, especially affecting such land and structure but not generally affecting the zoning district in which it's located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, by not allowing expansion of the structure and compliance with the FEMA flood zone requirements. And that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw based on the condition the residential structure renovation is constructed in accordance with all plans listed above under the conditions for the issuance of a special permit and the height of the structure does not exceed 35 feet above the mean construction grade. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Sean seconds. Any discussion? I will take a vote on variance. Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sean?
True.
Sean?
True.
And Sarah votes yes. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian?
Brian, thank you.
I'm willing to write this.
I'll review it if you like, sir.
Okay.
Is this going to be two decisions separate or are they going to be combined?
Be one decision. Probably two separate parts.
Yeah.
Because it was at the same meeting. So it makes more sense for one decision. Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it should be combined.
Yeah. Okay.
I agree.
Okay. And I'll try to expedite that writing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I would guess it would be prior to the end of September because I'm gone for two weeks in October.
Do you want me to take the?
Maybe.
No, never mind. I thought you said, I thought you were going to say gone early September. I was going to say I can draft it for you if you want.
No, I'm here through the end of, I think through October 3rd. I don't know. Okay, so you're all set.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. Why do you think it was in the top?
Well, we have been buttered that was from when we moved here.
Oh, because the.
Oh, the next door.
Because the shadows.
I think they worked that out.
Must have worked it out.
Well, they did. It's nice.
How's the same height, Tom?
Didn't they go, they just rent it? Yeah.
So now we move on to administrative items. Apparently, I didn't print out the whole agenda. We have two sets of minutes. And. And I made changes.
Yes, you did.
I made two minor changes to the ones from June. And that was in the first paragraph, I said. Build a new attached garage such that the new garage will be moved, this is Four North. Moved by four feet to increase the distance. I changed the two to from the rear lot line to one foot. And then I made a second change. On page. Five, removing a van. Neighborhood in which is located, end the requirements rather than in in the, in which is located, van and the requirements. Van was that kind of superfluous. Did anybody else have any other changes?
I have to tell those captains why. Captain's good, I'm good.
Um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from June twenty-first?
Some moved.
Brian moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim seconds. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye, aye.
So those are approved. Now, shortly before the meeting. I sent out substantive changes to the minutes from July nineteenth. Because what I discovered was that the original meeting, the minutes. Under one seventeen.
School.
School. Reiterated information from the June meeting and didn't have the motion from the July meeting. So I changed the minutes. I also added in under nine Crooked Lane. That Brian was writing the decision and that Sean was reviewing it, because that was in my notes.
Who's writing the decision, sorry to interrupt you, for the school street one?
It's already been written.
Oh, it's written?
I wrote it.
You wrote, you wrote it, okay.
I wrote both the June decision and the July decision and filed them on the same day.
Okay.
I filed them on August thirtieth.
Okay, so I'm writing, yes, I saw that.
Nine Crooked Lane.
Cool.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'll get them to you shortly.
Sixty days.
Agreed. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I said I'd do it.
So.
He said I'd be happy about it.
Do we want to circle the July ones back around for August? Do we want to vote on them as amended? I leave.
I've read them, so I'm fine.
I've read, I've read them, and other, and your changes make sense, so.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the July nineteenth minutes as as amended?
Some moved.
Brian moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim, just second. Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Let me know if you don't understand what I did, Gail.
I will accept all.
The only other thing, so status of decisions, do we only have nine Crooked Lane outstanding?
Correct.
Okay.
You just got to me.
You're gonna miss yourself.
Are you approving them? Oh, good lord.
The forty, the forty B appeal.
Yes, what's going on? It's August fifteenth, correct?
There was a conference on August fifteenth. There is another pre-trial conference on September thirteenth. And there's supposed to be a revised joint order of conditions filed on September eleventh. So then the person running the HAC hearing. Will look over those again and see if they're finalized on September thirteenth. A decision was made that because the expectation is that the public hearing probably won't start until the winter. That they were gonna try to do a site visit in either September or October. She's not, she asked if there was topography.
No, there's no topography.
And he said, and.
You're high heels.
Downman said, tell him, tell him, said yes, topography. He didn't say, it's great because I hit it.
You're high heels.
Tell her there's snakes there too.
But she didn't want to do it in the ice.
We've trapped, trapped through ice.
Right, so we're we're kind of, if you kind of look at the timeline, I expect it's gonna lag some more. And I don't know how long the hearing is gonna be, but it sounds like the decision won't be around until probably the second half of twenty twenty-five. They just issued a hearing for Weston. And they had closed the public hearing, I think in twenty twenty-one, beginning of twenty twenty-one, and just issued the decision in June.
And what did they decide?
They denied the appeal. Which was.
Inspect it?
No, the KP Law was the.
Denying meaning.
The council for the town and they're appealing it.
So they denied the town's appeal?
No, sorry, they approved.
The town's?
They approved the developer's appeal.
Okay, okay.
So now they're appealing.
So now the town's.
Now the town's gonna appeal the.
The Land Court, yes.
Same developer?
No, yeah.
What is the, what is the process after that? Is it, it goes to Land Court?
Yes.
Now, is there any appeal beyond Land Court other than?
Well, once you get into the court system, you could go all the way up to the.
To the State Supreme Court, presumably.
State Supreme Court if you wanted to, yeah. Now, the the one in Weston was a little different. Because it was, they were trying to protect the Cambridge water supply, but it's in Weston. So there was, and they were arguing state law, not local law. And you can only, your appeal has to be based on local needs. So that's why it's good that they allowed the intervenor for the group of ten.
The COMCOM, yeah.
Because they're they're arguing the local environment, the local COMCOM bylaws. So.
We talked about our case now.
Yeah, our case, yeah, yeah. Um, we have one, oh, do you have a question on that?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to do the timeframe. So you you anticipate a ruling, the initial ruling from the HAC sometime second half of twenty-five.
Yeah.
And then depending on what happens, it could be years after that too.
Oh, yeah, it can start out ten years, yeah. The. We have one application for September, which is twenty-three Eaglehead, which is raising the structure and building new. For, yeah, for September.
Gail has something.
Sorry, Gail, go ahead.
Is that what I put in your folder?
Yeah, well, I don't know, I didn't look, that's what you sent me.
I, well, I put the applications for next, for September in your.
I'm I'm sorry, twenty-three Old Neck.
Thank you, yeah, it was.
Not Eaglehead, that's my bad.
Yeah, okay, I was just, that doesn't sound familiar to me.
Yeah.
It's about a half million dollars to break in.
Yeah.
No.
It's a non.
Maybe this makes more sense, this is the house I was thinking of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a.
Which house is it?
Non-conforming lot.
It was on the market for a while, off and on.
Yeah.
On the right, as you're walking into Eaglehead. It's the only bad looking house there.
Okay, yeah.
It's amazing what an address mistake will be, Old Neck versus Eaglehead, that's a half a million dollars.
But it's now, it appears as, it's a non-conforming lot, but it appears as if the new structure conforms. That's what this looks like.
Those haven't been circulated to the board yet, have they?
No.
No. Okay.
I just asked, Gail, either this morning or yesterday, whether we had any application for September.
And that's September twenty-seventh, is that meeting?
No, it's earlier than that.
Oh, twenty.
It's the third Wednesday.
Okay.
Twenty. Twentieth. So the, I think we can still do the site visit on Tuesday. I checked the when the sun sets, and it sets at six forty minute. So I think we can sneak that in before it gets black. But I have an all boards meeting at seven.
As do we, John. John, John's there too, aren't you?
And John?
I'm, pardon?
Huh?
September nineteenth at seven o'clock.
Yeah, we're all at the same meeting. Where does that have to be?
I'm assuming at the school.
Your home turf.
It's with the school, it's with the school committee, the Essex, FinCon Essex Select Board, Manchester FinCon and Manchester Select Board.
Twentieth.
Oh, that's one of those, um, committee meetings.
Yeah, and you're required to supply candy in the home court.
Yeah, there's just two reps for each.
No.
Oh, it's for the.
Full, full, full bore, got it?
Full bore, this is a full bore.
Got it.
Yeah. So you're on, just in case you were trying to squeeze out.
You don't want to rant.
Any other, anything else we need to cover?
No.
Was that all?
I have one, I have one thing.
Go ahead, Gail.
I think that we need to move the meeting from the twentieth to the twenty-seventh. I don't have two full weeks. Today's Wednesday, I can't get the public hearing notice in for the eighth and the fifteenth.
That's what I was worried about. That's why I asked if there were any applications, because I said, oh, it's getting late.
I, I know, I just, it slipped by, guys, sorry.
I, I have, oh, wait a minute. Oh, my calendar is all screwed up. I tried to populate my calendar today and I didn't do it right. I have FinCom on the twenty-seventh. I can't do it on the twenty-seventh.
You can do it any, you can do it twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth. We might have MBTA on the twenty-eighth.
Why can't you get it in for the eighth and fifteen?
It needs to run on.
The eighth and the fifteen.
The eighth and the.
Oh, no, the first and the eighth. No, the eighth and the fifteen. No, first and the eighth.
Oh, I'm getting this.
Yeah, it's gonna run, yeah, September first.
It's too, it's too short for the second week, Sarah.
Yeah, we're not fourteen days away.
No.
Okay. So what are people's schedule like the last week in September? Tuesday or Thursday, which is preferable, or, yeah.
I'm I'm out of town. Wednesday to Friday for work.
So the twenty-sixth works then?
Yeah.
I have no lives, so twenty-sixth works for me as well. Any new shows coming up on?
I'm free the day you need it, though.
Oh, no, you're, you're a voting member, yes.
This was your free.
I am free on the twenty-sixth.
Today was your free rack, you're done.
I took your mulligan pound.
Nine twenty-six.
Twenty-six, huh, okay.
Okay, so we need to get room five in sixteen twenty-three studios for that and cancel nine twenty.
I will take care of that, and I'll put it in the tag, so everybody knows we needed to change the date.
And you'll notify.
At the application.
Twenty-three Old Neck.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you have site visits on the twenty-fifth, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have anything, there's no select word on Monday or twenty-fifth, so we're good. I think that's why we moved to.
Oh, I think that's, I have to go to a plane when we need, but that's okay.
Five thirty, that's one site, you can do it.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm some moved.
Brian moves, second.
I second.
Sean seconds. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm free this break.